Go me, or please stand to the ledge if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call order, roll call, start on my left.
Counselperson John Rogers.
Counselperson Craig, Assistant Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Brett Byer.
Counselperson Josh Aron.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda in a second.
We got a motion in a second, no additions from the staff, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, now carry it. Looking for approval of council meeting minutes of the regular meeting of May tenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, now carry it. That'll take us on to financing budget. You got the promised payable listing, what's the additional listing there? Any questions? For the staff, you know it's Carla. We have a motion to approve the list. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, now carry it. That'll take us reading the motions in general business. First item under motions in general, excuse me, general business tonight is regional pond at Rick Labor, regional pond restoration area. We have the restoration timeline. Public Works, uh, Public Works staff have been working with the neighbors around Labor Pond to restore their yards after the creation of the pond. There have been some concerns on the progress of the grass and the restoration of the area. Below are the actions and the timeline of what has been done. As you can see, since June first of twenty twenty-one, when the project was completed, we've done grading, seeding, tried to remove rocks, debris, site was prepped, reseeded due to poor take-a-seed. In September of twenty-one, November twenty-one, tile lines were dug and repaired to properly drain. We've been, since the creation of the pond, we've spent a lot of Public Works time up there, uh, working on it. Now, there was no action needed. Director Hale, do you want to speak to this?
I think Rick was the one that wanted to raise.
Hey, Rick, will you step up to the podium, please, and give your name and address, please, Rick, even though we know you're Rick.
Name is Rick Labor, address is seven sixteen Highway sixty-three, South. My, my concern on the pond is the, I would like to get property lines in because I do look at trees that I want to plant and that area does look still like a disaster.
Property lines are in.
The bins are in.
Bins are in.
Bins are in, okay.
And we've looked at it, I've actually been up there too, and I got here last year, Rick. When I was up there looking, probably one of the first days, the guy could get back in there and do something. It's been kind of an offspring for us.
I understand.
And I noticed some, I noticed some grass coming through, we've discussed it. We're kind of behind on a couple other things, I believe Public Works is going to get caught up and hopefully redig a look, we're going to give it just a little.
We already driven, seeded again.
Again, already? Okay.
So, I, I mean, the frustrating, I'm as frustrated as you are because we can't control.
We didn't have the deal with the drought last year.
We have, did we?
It was a drought last year and then we had a cold, wet late spring this year and we've got parks we gotta get open and stuff too. So we can't just necessarily break off and go. Everything got pushed back and I believe if you guys remember it, put your council packets last week before any of this even came up and the report that there are people that are even expecting things to be done now because we've had such a late spring and then it went right to eighty and ninety degrees. And there's just something we can't get to because of the late spring.
But of course, we're back to frost again now. So I mean, it's, it's good to be a normal spring around here yet.
We've received it now three times.
Uh-huh.
We've received it three times now.
I want you to generally understand, we hear your concerns and we're concerned with it and we're trying, we, we truly are. We, we probably don't work on the same timeline that you work on, I understand that. But we're trying to get that, we want it shaped up as bad as you, we truly do. So I, I don't want you to think we're just not hearing your pleas, we are. We've been up here looking at it too and stuff and.
No, Rick, when we went and looked at last year, you remember, we came in and after the contractor and I agreed, we do a hundred percent, there was rocks out there that were big, they didn't pull any of them out. So we came back up and.
Oh, no, I, I agree, you guys did a lot of stuff that we talked about, just.
And when you came out and inspected, it was fine when you left, it's just that the grass didn't grow and we had a really dry, hot summer.
We just got such big humps and stuff in there.
I mean, those are all, I think leveled out now. The humps we're getting now is because we have clumps of grass that have grown and then bare spots and when grass grows, it gets root ball system so that it's up higher than where it's not growing, it's frustrating and I'm not.
Rick, I'd like you to let you know, as a matter of fact, they had me up and Bill was there. I said, what are these rocks doing around here? Well, before we left, we found out a neighbor had put them rocks there. They didn't want them near yards, so they kind of rolled them over. So, I have you know, I took, I have you know, I took care of them. I, I rolled them clear down into the pond. But I mean, sometimes, some of these things that happen, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is some of them are beyond our control, we don't even know what their neighbors are throwing out there.
I know, I understand.
And we try to, we're trying to, absolutely, we want it shaped up too. We want it shaped up. And I'm glad they got the line smarts, they can get your trees in and stuff. Take my word for it, next one you can get mad ass beat, but we're doing our bottom best to get that shaped up. Because we don't want to keep washing in and everything else too, we have a big washout up there, we have to take care of it.
Yeah, I know, and I do appreciate the fact that you take such good care of stuff and that's the people you want in the community that take pride in your work and stuff like that. And you do, and I know because of that, it's frustrating that it's taken this long. But just with the drought that we had last year and then the late spring, we, we did reseed it last fall again in September and we walked, looked at it three weeks ago and you can see that the seed, Jenna pointed out to you that they're seeding some of those bare spots. It just didn't take because of the dry, hot conditions.
Sean makes a very good point, Rick. You made it a little hard for us to keep them. We're starting to prepare a new dog, it's hot, we, we're doing our best to do as good as you are, but it's going to take us a minute to catch you. Because you do a fantastic job, we appreciate it.
I'm trying to keep my yard nice.
Because it is, and I understand why, it's an entrance to stirfield, we want it looking respectable. And we truly appreciate that and we're trying to get ours there too.
Okay.
So thank you for, thank you for your concern.
Wanted to let you know that I was still concerned about.
But we're, we're, take my word for it, we're concerned too.
All right.
They get real concerned around us and I got to help that, so it's, I'm glad to hear that you've been here, driven, seeded, and let's hope for the best.
All right, Rick, if you want, give me a holler and out, we'll go find the bins. So you know exactly where they're at.
Yeah, I don't.
They just get put in last week, I remember you sent me the email.
Okay, because I ran down last, or week ago, because I've had these trees sitting up there that kind of need to get in the ground.
If you give me a holler, I'll come up, meet with you, we'll find the bins, so you know exactly where those are at. And we did reseed it and of course, we got three inches of rain.
Well, you're lucky, I got four and a half out there.
But I don't, Rick's not lucky though, because it probably washed a lot of that seed away, so we keep trying.
I understand, you know what it looks like up in our neighborhood out there. Rick, thank you for coming, thank you for your concern and I don't want to speak for the entire council even though they're being kind of quiet here, but we do appreciate the way you keep things and we're trying to get ours up to par.
Good.
So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, there's no action requested tonight. So the next one will be Center Common Alley, C I D. Resolution awarding the contract. Bids were opened on Thursday, May nineteenth at eleven a.m. City Engineer, uh, over North East Estimates for the project was three hundred nine thousand and fifty-two dollars and twenty cents. Excuse me. Four contractors submitted packages for consideration. This project was advertised as a low bid. Contractors. L Corp Construction, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-four, thirty-eight. Edge, three hundred two thousand, four twenty-one, seventy-nine. Be Cook, three hundred thirty-three, two forty, twenty-two. And Alcon is at three hundred thirty-nine, sixty-one, excuse me, six hundred thirteen, eighty. So the action requested will be to approve or deny resolution receiving bids and awarding contract to low bidder, L Corp Construction, for the Center Common Alley project. And Jenna, after you went through, everything was correct?
Everything looked good.
Okay, you got anything to add?
Um, I guess just for your guys' knowledge and everything, with the bids, we did put this to be pretty open-ended. Um, they have a certain number of days once they start to get things done, but they do have until mid-October to get anything. So they could be starting mid-September to finish this project. That's how we kept it very flexible for the contractors, trying to look for a lower pricing.
But once they open the ground up, they got so many days.
There will be, there's minimal turf restoration on this too, which is the big thing at the end.
Correct. So, um, but they still have to get done by mid-October, so.
Perfect. All right, so any questions for the engineer? Looking for a motion to approve or not?
I'll make a motion to approve, Roger.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, now carry it. Public Works Maintenance Approval, approval to hire Dalton. You said that, right? How do you say that, Ray?
I'm sure we'll be on the spot too, not two of us going.
And Carter Jansen. First, now committee, allow City Administrator Schimmel and Public Works Director Hale interview applicants for the maintenance one positions. Due to the retirement of Prevy end of June and Harrison end of October. Position is a pay grade seven point three. They are recommending Carter Jansen and Dalton Ray, Ray for the positions. Ray will start on June thirteenth, Jansen, Jansen will start on June twenty-first. Open for approval. So the, the action would be to approve hiring Dalton and Carter for maintenance one positions. Questions? Discussion?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, now carry it. All right, now it takes us to Summer Fest twenty twenty-two. We're looking for a liquor license approval and a street closing. Summer Fest twenty twenty-two is right around the corner and approval is needed for two items. Number one, temporary liquor license for the Chamber of Commerce to sell beer on July third during the dance at Bear Cave Park. Two, close down the streets along the parade route, mapping for the road is attached. To approve, the council action will be, you want two motions on this, Cheryl?
One.
Now be one. The action requested will be to approve temporary liquor license and to approve three closings for the parade route. Questions or discussion? We'll go back to the old route again, which a lot of people are very happy about it. I've actually had calls asking already who I know what the parade route is.
I want to set the chairs on, right?
Yep. First of June, because the chair is going up. So is there any questions or discussion about any of this?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, now carries. That takes us to wastewater treatment facility. Oh, I hope it's a tour, great. You have never got to see it yet, have you? I see plenty. The oxidation ditch cover was showing signs of significant deterioration. S E H Structural Engineer Ben Wolf examined the cover and has determined that it is dis-repaired. Engineers have discussed with Public Works, uh, to discuss possible ways to fix it. Different opinions were looked, options were looked into, including removal of the cover, replacement with a catalog. However, after talking with the manufacturer, it was determined that it is in the best interest of the system that the mixer area of the oxidation ditch be covered, ditch cover be removed and replaced. Approved contract for engineered plans and specifications for replacing the oxidation dish, and Bill, I see you're anxious.
Yeah, we won't have any action for you tonight because in your attachments, was the study in there?
No.
Nope. Okay. It's a pretty extensive study that we got from S E H and so we thought, before we do the contract, study over that, then our staff with Jenna and the wastewater people on her staff will get together for one more, um, meeting to hone in on.
Takes quite, takes quite an extensive deal, you decided, did you cover poop up or not, or?
Seventeen pages, so we didn't offer enough time to.
To help you guys understand as you're reading it, they are saying that we're at mixes, if we take the covers off to cheapen the project up, that it will hurt with our nitrification process, which we do not have to deal with right now.
No, I think it might hurt us out there.
Huh?
What'd you say with the nitri?
The nitrification process.
So as we, as we grow to the plant and whatnot, the future projections, they're saying within five to ten years, we will have to deal with that process and if we leave that open, that will hurt us.
It, it's not exactly growing of the city, it is the M P C A putting
More requirements, yeah.
More requirements on us and nitrification, nitrates will be one of them, we know that are coming, it likely won't be on our next permit, but the one after that.
Okay.
Um, and so with nitrification process, it is better to keep things warm than it is to let them cool down. To take the top off where the mixers are, you'd be bringing in cool air, especially during the winter, um, and really cooling down temperatures, with a cover on top of that mixer area, you do keep things warm. So, um, it's not that it cannot be done now, but it's within a few years, it might not be in the best interest for the processes and what the M P C A puts us under for what we have to meet.
Okay, good, good point, but if you're talking about because of future growth and everything else, is the facility, the way it is, big enough for quite a bit of growth? So I mean, if we spend the money on all this right now, that means a short number of years, we gotta just.
We've got space set aside for expansion to double basically what we have out there for the growth.
That's what I mean, so what I'm saying is.
You would still need that process.
No, I know, but you aren't going to spend the money engineering now and in a short time throw it away because you've got to build later. You're going to build another.
We're going to add more of the same things, is what the projection is right now.
All right.
We, we're looking at ways, and maybe.
I understand what I was asking there, Jenna.
Maybe we can build it so that we don't have to put all the covering on it, but adding the covering at the time we do need it wouldn't be, you know, we don't have to care and have extra expense at that time. We just lay down and plant on top and tack it down or something like that. So we're looking at different ways of doing that so we don't have this huge expense right up now and we can absorb it in better over time.
Meetings change.
So now you should have that.
Yeah, now you'll have it, and it's a pretty sizable project, so we wanted you to have time to absorb it a little.
Hey, yeah, we're both thinking seventeen pages.
Yeah.
So there's no motion needed tonight, is that what you're saying, just to?
No, just to review and know that
Yeah.
there will be engineering necessary in order to fix it.
So hopefully, your next meeting and the meeting after will try to come back with.
We, the best time for us to do this is in the fall when our flows are low, because we're going to have to shut one ditch down. So right now, we'd be in the world of hurt, because with all the reasons we've been having. So we'd like to get it so we can get that stuff started maybe this fall.
And with approval, even at tonight's meeting, we'd be projecting that this is in October, so timeline wise, I'm going to think about that one too.
All right. Everybody hear you there? All right, there you go, you got everybody's approval.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and I guess that takes us right out of the meeting part, now we're into the mayor's staff consultant class. I'd like to remind everyone, tomorrow is primaries, please blow out the bolt, hope you can do that. Don't also forget that on Monday of this month, next, this coming Monday, we'll be celebrating our fallen warriors from our community and from the nation on Memorial Day. Uh, there is very shortened, if any, parade, it sounds like we're going to meet right at the cemetery this year. And we're holding there, the band's supposed to be there. So I guess I'd like to tell you, have an enjoyable weekend, but we sure would like to see you on Monday down there.
Yeah, that program will start at ten.
Yeah, and Monday. Bill will be there showing his great support for me, which I appreciate immensely. Yeah.
He had the speech.
Yes, I had to give it. But other than that, school gets out on Friday for the year. All the teachers are very excited and happy about it. Pool will be opening shortly, we have to see our directors here to give us a wonderful update tonight about it. We've had a long and tedious spring so far, we're getting some new staff in place. We've got some real good people hired to help with Public Works. The rest of the staff is hard at it, we're having a good year so far, let's keep it that way. Please, everyone, enjoy Memorial Day, but don't forget the fallen heroes working there. So that's all I got, Bill, what do you do?
Uh, reports in your packet, really the only thing to highlight is another meeting next Tuesday, the thirty-first. Uh, just relaxed atmosphere, we'll do a street tour in the bus and, um, we'll show you the streets we've got on what we think is the proposed schedule. And then if you've got anything you want to show us around town, you are free to.
All right, any questions for the finance, uh, city administrator? All right, thanks, Bill. Finance Director Carl, do you have anything?
I have my report tonight.
Any questions for the finance director? All right, Public Works Director Sean, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a report in there and I want to add that, uh, you guys were aware of the issues we've had with pickups, uh, that we were delayed on getting because of the, all the COVID, I suppose, or whatever related to going on, that's delayed getting things. Uh, I called today because I was told in May to give them a call and see where the state bids, if they were going to have it. They are going to have it, but the process is going to be that you're going to have to order a pickup and you will not know the price on it until after you've ordered it. And it's for one day and if you don't order it by Thursday, first thing Thursday morning, it's got to be in Wednesday afternoon, by noon on Thursday, you won't be able to get any trucks. So we're going to look at, you can cancel the order. So we are going to look at ordering the two pickups that we're budgeting for, see what the prices come in and House can honor the state bidding also.
Jesus.
And we can cancel them after the fact. And if you guys don't want us to do that, but I talked to the, that's Carl of, Carl Chevrolet out of Iowa has the state contract, which seems buried at their island. But, uh, that's who has the state contract, I contacted them today and then I talked to Greg House and he said he will honor any state bidding also.
Okay, so if we, if we fall into the primaries of their twenty-four hour bid, are we guaranteed our pickups?
That'll be the only way you will get a pickup. And but it may, the, the way he talked, yes.
And, and did they give you a guarantee of, will it be in the next ten years or?
I don't think you got that.
And I don't know what you want me to do. Just, I just want to give you the information and.
I guess you got a bid?
We're not technically.
We don't got paid till we get the pickup, right?
That's correct, and we're not out anything if we do and we can cancel it.
All right.
But if we don't do it, he guarantees if we don't have the thing in there Wednesday afternoon for them to do it for a single Thursday morning, we won't get a pickup. Because they're only building so many and they'll take what order they have and that's all they're building.
It's budgeted, the money's there, it's bidable.
It's budgeted, we don't know what the price is going to be after, I mean, it's.
Well, you had.
But we have the ability, we've got the ability in the capital, in the, in the Public Works capital budget plan that, you know, we are not going down to the wire each year on the money because they're saving up for bigger purchases and this and that. And we, we look at it periodically and are able to shuffle things around, so there's no, there's no concern that the money won't be there for it, it's just the fact of, you know, depending on when, when they come in.
Push other stuff on.
Yeah, might push other stuff out and depending on what they do come in for price.
The one guarantee I can give you is it won't be what they're budgeted for.
I guarantee that too.
Yes, we love that, but I'm sure it's not.
So you don't have to bid them. Boss, we don't have to fork up on money till we give them.
Yeah, and then he told me, I told him, okay, if we do that, the next council meeting is going to be in two weeks. I can cancel up to that two weeks and he said that wouldn't be a problem.
All right.
So the next council meeting.
You'll know the price by then, is what you're saying?
I'll know the price Friday.
Okay.
So, and then we got two, the two weeks after that before a decision has been made, but I'll email them out and you guys can make a decision that way.
I'm going to say, I say bid them.
That's fine.
Okay, but now with the, if House can match the bids, we've always kind of stayed, tried to stay local, if he says he can, I'm recommending that we just bid them through House on the state bid.
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't match, dollar for dollar.
Yeah.
And truck for truck.
Yeah.
I'm going to, and the rest of them's in there too, so. Any other questions for Director Hale? All right, thanks, Sean. City Engineers report, Jenna?
Well, we've done some walkthroughs of the work that was done last year. So punch list work is being completed, paving is likely to happen in June, um, early June, so if you're getting any questions or seeing things about that, that is what's going on.
Well, I see everything's been raised up.
Yep, and.
Clear your comments.
They went and looked at the concrete and, um, checked it in for any curb issues or any sidewalk issues that needed to get replaced right now.
Any big issues anywhere in any area or anything?
A few small.
A few small ones, so nothing too big.
Correct, so where they get a whole cement out, but small little sections.
Um, they had twelve to fourteen, I think, that's on the punch list, so, um, not too unreasonable, so they'll get that one done and I know they're also be paving, um, rolling bridge forth around the same time. Those will be happening and we keep working on plans for the twenty twenty-three project, so I will something to share with Sean in the next couple of weeks. Okay, from this.
Okay, any questions for the engineer? Everybody's happy with what she's doing?
Yeah.
Okay. They're all happy, lucky you.
Right.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Jenna. That takes us to Library Directors Report, Nate, you got anything more?
Uh, above and beyond what's in my report, which, there's a lot in my report, so you have, you have a lot going on this summer.
How come there's unreliable data in here, it says hundred percent?
Uh, for the, um, Wi-Fi sessions, I just, it just came back with a number that was, was, just seemed way too low to be real, so, um, I am working with Selco, um, to see if there's something funky going on, because I just, I just have a hard time imagining we only had eight Wi-Fi sessions for the month of April, um. You know, because I showed up for work a lot of those days, so.
You don't think it's the Russians are doing it, right?
I don't, no. I don't, I don't think there's a weird recount or anything. Um, and then the one major change from our summer reading program, um, Craig, I know you have the heart of a gambler. Um, last year, we did scratch off tickets, um, but, uh, and those were pretty popular for our prizes, but this year.
Ah.
That's cool. Yeah. So, um, every time a kid completes us a, um, a reading record at our library, they will get to get a chance to win, um, a dilly bar or a pool, uh, uh, one day pool pass or any number of other prizes. Bowling game, um, uh, it's going to be a lot of fun and, um.
Adult prizes too, or not?
Uh, these, well, we do an adult winter reading over, so we might recycle the wheel for the winter, you know, um.
That might read books.
Yeah. And, uh, but otherwise, yeah, we, uh, we appreciate the, uh, feedback from, uh, from, from Craig about our intern and our summer plans. Um, that's going to be a real, we're going to have a lot going on this summer and, um, yeah, we're really excited about it.
Good, questions for Nate? Like I said, he was there Saturday to present what he had. And people were, like I said, fairly pleased with what they saw, what you had there.
Yeah.
Mark, Joe, the dog holes, we had plenty of them.
Very good.
Very good.
All right, any questions for Nate from anyone here? Thank you, Nate. Well, fire chief, but we have, we have Pool Director Jake here.
Yes.
He's got good news for us. All right.
That time of the year. All right, I have a list of stuff, just stop and ask if you have questions. Uh, first off, thanks for purchasing the new vacuum and the hiring of the staff. Uh, we had lots of good feedback on our second year of online swim lessons. So Lexi, Laurel, um, Cheryl with the the community for the fair, job fair, Carlo with all the stuff, Angelique, they're all awesome. Uh, we sold lots of passes so far, tons of pool parties have been booked. Um, everything seems to be going well. Couple city workers and myself, we're over there this weekend working on pumps, the water's still freezing, uh, but we'll turn that on, heaters. The water's still freezing, uh, but we'll turn that on, heaters. Uh, there's a new feature donated by the Olsen Hens family. I think there's a article in the paper tomorrow on it, so it's very nice of them. It's more for toddlers. The date we are opening tentatively is June sixth, however, school is out early. Uh, we might offer additional times next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, depending on if we have enough staff, weather dependent as well, but it's looking nicer. Next Thursday and Friday, we can't be open, it's really training all day for certification. Um, working closely with Robert from Fairway, obviously prices have gone way up. Uh, what he's doing for us is ordering bulk. So therefore, it's cheaper, but so far, it was good. And this Thursday, we are planning to have a B C I schools for their end of the year celebration. Uh, everything else is just there, seems to be running smoothly. Uh, been working closely with the principal there, so.
Their swim lessons pretty much sold out, just out of curiosity?
No, um, they're full, but the first session for sure is sold out, second's really full, third, half, fourth, they will get there, so. But it's a mad rush at eight A M. when it opens, it's, but, no.
Any questions for Pool Director Jake? So you, you figuring on being open for sure on the sixth though?
For sure on the sixth.
All right.
Cool. Yeah, all right.
Thanks a lot, Jake. Keep it up.
We're still looking for, uh, Morning Water Olympics Director, so.
What time do I have to be there?
You can take turns, you can lean in every time.
Something we should look into, you should.
Get you a suit.
Oh, I thought that was optional.
I don't know if they'll make more money than.
All right, thanks Jake. Commission Board Reports, Chamber of Commerce, nothing in the packet. If anybody knows of anything right now, E D A, H R A, nothing right now. Finance?
Nothing.
Library?
Uh, we had a meeting last week, um, just talked about the expansion. Nate has a few people in the library. Uh, Building Committee, um, met the intern, Nate's been pretty lucky, he got an intern for the summer. Um, otherwise, everything's good.
What do you think of the return on Saturday, Frank?
I don't know, I'm sick.
Oh. Personnel?
Minutes.
Minutes, meeting, hired a couple of great guys. Eyes on you.
Nothing.
Public Safety?
Nothing.
Public Works?
Nothing.
Brady?
I don't report.
Roll call.
Uh, minutes in your packet, it was just covered a couple of project items that deal with Mendat and the city rock. And then just another county-related item that I forgot under my report. Um, that follow-up hazardous, uh, drop-off site is coming up June sixth, seventh in the St. John's Park and that's open to all our area residents. Drop-off paints, cleaners, stains, fuels.
How about, I've cleaned up days turned out pretty good. Easy turnout?
Yeah, uh, Leon said it was slower on Saturday, but he thinks people were sick of waiting in line on Saturdays, so we just planned on going on Wednesday. So they waited in line on Wednesday.
Glad you're, I'm glad you're used to it. All right, Transit Advisory Committee?
No report.
No communications. Alan, do you want to open mic? No mic, we're looking for the final motion. To adjourn, Mr. Adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Dr. Say, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?